Okay, so it's time to start the meeting. All right, so this meeting is being recorded and will be available on Local Access Channel 18 and on the town website. It is being recorded now and will be streamed at a later time since we're recording at the library. And I was going to just give everyone a little moment of peace, invite everybody to kind of take a moment and a breath before we begin the meeting. So I'm going to read a little line here from Tignat Han.
Oh, I love them.
All right. "To observe the impermanence of things is not to reject them, but to be in contact with them with deep understanding without being caught in desire and attachment." All right, so we're going to begin our meeting now. All right. So the first part of the meeting is to see if anybody from the select board has any information they want to share. Amy?
Yeah, I just wanted to relay a post I saw on Facebook that really says something for our rec department. And it starts out, it was posted on the Cape Cod Parents and Caregivers page, I guess they have a group. It says, "The Eastham Rec Department is offering safe family activities again on the last two weeks of August. We did the water games. So much fun to have half of the field just for us. They provided water guns, brand new in the package, water balloons and buckets of water. So worth the time. If bingo is your thing, do that one. I am so impressed with how well this was organized and how safe and fun they kept it. There are multiple slots available. Call them to secure one. Worth the $10." And that gives a phone number, 508-240-5974. And they're having bingo on Wednesday, the 22nd of July. Oh, sorry, these were July ones. I thought they were for August, too. So they should still be having some in August. So check the rec department to see what they have to offer. But it was really nice to see that, that people are taking advantage of this and really enjoying it. When there isn't a lot else for kids to, you know, participate in, it's nice.
Anyone else? Jared O. All right. With that, we're going to move on to the next item. That's going to be the public hearing, joint section of the meeting. So this is for the tax rate for FY21. Do I read this part? Yes, okay. So Belinda's going to be presenting, but I'm going to just read the little blurb first. "In accordance with Chapter 369 of the Acts of 1982 amending Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1979, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen regarding the allocation of the tax levy among the five classes of property for fiscal year 2021." The Board of Assessors is going to be presenting on their recommendations. So I guess I'm going to turn that over to Belinda.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In your packet, I put the recommendations and explanations from the Board of Assessors for this classification hearing. The Board would appreciate your vote on this evening. And then after town meeting, this hearing will continue so that you can approve the LA 5 excess capacity. Reason on doing this is because we're trying to get the tax rate set as quickly as we can after the town meeting. Okay. And now, Jackie, I heard you say the town meeting is now September 26?
It will be once the Selectmen decide that tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. So now, coming up to this is my next bit. The fiscal year 2021 recommendations by the Board of Assessors at their August 5th meeting voted unanimously to make the following recommendations to the Select Board for the fiscal year 2021. On the matter of classifying the tax rate, vote the residential factor of 1. So each class maintains 100% of its full tax value share and not shifted tax burden from residential and open space classes to the commercial, industrial and personal property classes. On the matter of the open space discount, the Board would ask you not to grant an open space discount, which would shift the tax burden from the open space property to the residential property class. On the matter of the residential exemption, not to grant the residential exemption, which would shift the tax burden within the residential tax class from the residence to the part-time residence. Now, I know we did a lot of work with this last year. And I have further down in the notes, we'll go over what the percentages is. It's actually gone up a little bit to 49 from last year, but Rich will bring that up a little bit later. Voting in accordance with these recommendations would retain the historical pattern of taxation in Eastham. The following is an explanation of the various options and the reasons are the assessors' recommendations. Okay, next page, Rich, please. Classification, the tax rate means applying different tax rates to different classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial and personal property. According to procedures and on formulas set by state statutes, voting residential factor of 1 establishes the same tax rate may be applied to all classes of property, the single tax rate per thousand dollars of value. Classification allows the Selectmen to allocate a higher percentage of the tax burden to the commercial, industrial and personal property taxes by adopting residential factor of less than 1. Such action would result in a lower tax rate for residential and open space, but a higher tax rate for the commercial, industrial and personal property classes. The next vote would be on the open space discount. The open space classification is reserved for properties that would otherwise be held for the production of income, but instead are preserved in an open and natural condition for the benefit enjoyment of the public, which does not necessarily imply public access to the property. Eastham currently does not have any properties classified as open space, so it would have no effect that the Select Board should vote for an open space discount. The assessors are of the belief that the open space issues are best addressed through the exercise of conservation restrictions or chapter land elections. Both demonstrate a fervent commitment to open space, preservation on the part of the property owner, and it will also provide some of the recapture of the forgiven tax dollars. Residential exemption grants an exemption of up to 35% of the average residential property value for all resident properties. Through the selection, application procedure of the exemption to the year-round residence and the calculation of the new tax rate to recapture the lost levy, the exemption results in reduced taxes being paid by some resident property owners while shifting the tax burden to part-time resident property owners. Residents of homes assessed by this last year ago were 900,000, approximately assessment. Landowners and owners of more than one property. This is not a means-tested exemption. The assessors do not recommend granting this residential exemption as this results in shifting the tax levy share not between the classes, but between the residential class itself. As part-time residents already pay a personal property tax on the contents of their Eastham homes, fiscal year 2020, that was $226,000, which residents do not pay, the assessors feel it would be inequitable to create this separation strata within the residential class. And the small commercial exemption is another option for consideration by the Select Board. The result of the legislation passed in 1944, this exemption allows the Select Board to exempt up to 10% of the assessed value of commercial properties that are assessed for less than $1 million and are occupied with less than 10 employees. This exemption would shift the tax burden within the commercial, industrial and personal property classes and from some small commercial and industrial properties. As Eastham has a small community industrial class, the small business exemption could cost some hardship on the other businesses. Okay, so do you want to go ahead and do the classification motions? Or is there any, sorry, are there any questions?
So I think, is Rich presenting on any of this, too, or is it just?
Well, Rich is helping me with the slides because I'm at home and I haven't got the technology. But Rich, could you show up the residential parcels with the non-resident and resident percentages?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so you can see the total number of residential parcels, residents, non-residents, and this year it's gone up to 49%. As last year's was decided that you were going to wait till it went up to 60% over two years to decide whether or not you were going to then vote for residential exemption. Are there any questions?
I'm going to turn it over to the Board to see if anybody on the Board has questions. Amy, Jared?
Not really a question. Are we going to start talking about our thoughts on these motions now, or?
Yeah, so I was hoping that you would go ahead and vote on these motions tonight.
Well, I think that there's some discussion from the Board first, Belinda, before we...
Absolutely.
So do we need to make the motions first and then?
Normally you would, but I, go ahead and just talk about it.
I think we can just talk, Jared, so go right ahead.
Okay.
I agree with you on everything except the residential tax exemption. I know we went over these numbers at nauseam last year, and we sort of came to an agreement as a group in what made the most sense. Things have changed a lot since then. And I think if there's any way to provide any support at all that we can additional for people who live here and work here year-round, we should do it. And if that means that year-rounders pay a couple extra hundred bucks less and people who are able to afford a second house and a second mortgage and perhaps make money off that in the interim, I think they can afford to chip in to help out everyone else. That's just my take. And regarding the extra taxes they pay, $226,000 divided by, if we're saying half or close to half, that comes out on average to $92 per taxpayer for second homeowner. So I wouldn't really use that as a critical reason to not do the residential tax exemption at this time. So those are just my thoughts on it. And happy to hear what anyone else thinks on that.
Do I have anyone else? Amy?
Yeah, I hear you, Jared, that, you know, there definitely are people that need help. And I think our family support package that we're, you know, proposing for a town meeting is, you know, it's twice what we gain from the part-timers in their, you know, tax on their contents of their home. So it's a substantial amount of money, and it is spread across everyone. I think, you know, we kind of showed that just shifting, what, 10% of value for an exemption really is quite a shift for the part-time residents. And, you know, well, yes, they do afford second homes. You know, some of them, it isn't necessarily a luxury. They may own that because of a family member, or, you know, they inherited it, something that, you know, it still can be somewhat of a burden to people. Maybe they hope to retire here and they're kind of trying to hold it, you know, and rent it out until they can use it. I think there's a lot of, you know, extenuating circumstances in some of these cases. It isn't like there's corporations necessarily owning, you know, a bunch of homes here. I think places like Boston and some of the bigger cities have more of those problems that we don't. I really, I really like, you know, our 60% cutoff. I think it shows that it spreads it a little more evenly. And even 60% is kind of on the low end of, you know, other towns that have gone ahead and shifted it. I do really like our family support package. And I think we could really reach a lot of people that way. And I know the Board of Assessors have worked pretty hard to come up with other exemptions that people can, you know, use. They can apply and get those at this point. And I think we're in pretty good shape right now to do that, you know, what we've been doing. And there's always, you know, I know people cringe when we say this, you know, on a video, but, you know, if someone doesn't pay their taxes, we're not going to, like, throw them out of their house. You know, eventually, the town will get the money. When the house sells, the person, you know, if it's an elderly person and they can't afford to pay their taxes, you know, they don't have to pay them. We can absorb that for a little while. We're going to get our money eventually. It's not like we're never going to get the money. And, you know, I think that needs to be, maybe people need to be told more of that, that...
The tax deferrals, the tax deferrals, all done.
Yeah.
Yeah, that does go in the town meeting and the reduction of the interest rate on the tax deferrals. And then the senior work off and just keep moving forward.
A bunch of different programs to really try to help people. And I think this family support package will really help the younger, younger people, you know, the ones we don't want to lose. So just my two cents right now.
It looks like Art, Art, you want to say something?
Yeah, I wasn't around for your discussion last year. Could somebody put that chart back up that they had on? I didn't quite understand that.
Thanks, Rich. So, or do you want to explain, Jackie?
Well, we should pull for you, Art, the full, all the data that we went through because the Board of Assessors, Belinda and Mike put together a whole list that would have gone through what the formula would look like depending on whether you were a resident, non-resident, all of that. This one is simply the percentages of residents to non-residents for each of, in each of the year. So we're showing the pattern is rising, but it does kind of go back and forth different years. So you'll notice the percentages might go up a year and then down the next and then up again. It's generally rising, but not at a rapid rate, is basically what it shows.
The progression was past to the current year, as I looked down that chart?
So basically, what that chart is showing is an increase in part-time residents.
Okay.
Current to past, so the top...
The top is the oldest and the bottom is now.
Top is the most recent.
I assume when you did this, there was an analysis that... This would only apply to residents under $900,000 in such value?
No. Oh, that was the number, well, those were the numbers from last year. There's a break, there's a cutoff point. And once you get to the cutoff point, you're actually paying more money than you would have.
Yeah, Art, I'm going to pause this just because I do think it would be helpful for Art to get that information that we...
I can get that to Art.
Yeah, because it helped wrap your brain around the entire scope of why, you know, the trends that are happening in town and what led the Board to question bringing into a residential tax exemption. And it also helps fully appreciate the scope of the impacts of a residential tax exemption, what it means.
On who?
On who, exactly. And if your property value is above a certain amount, but you're still a year-round resident, what does that mean, et cetera. I think that seeing all that information is helpful to understand.
And I'm happy to meet with Art anytime.
Well, let's set that down because my inclination is to not do this, is to keep everybody at the same rates, not to lower residence and increase it for part-time residents. It's a fairness issue, but I guess the numbers.
Okay. I'm just going to clarify, Art, too. Last year, the Board did vote to do a trigger for a residential tax exemption should the makeup of a town hit 60-40 with 60% part-time, 40% full-time resident. But...
That was the policy decision they made last year.
And I saw a couple hands up. Rich, did you have something you wanted to say, Rich?
Yeah, just for the benefit of your discussion, I just want to point out, in communities that have adopted this and when we've considered this in Yarmouth and other places, they've always asked the Board of Selectmen to keep in mind that you really do need quite a bit of lead time to do this. And it's a tradition in the practice and in the Commonwealth that we do these tax classification hearings after town meeting typically in July or August, and then the bills go out in the fall. But it's not a quick calculation. So in other words, those 3,093 residential taxpayers don't automatically get exemption just because you vote a different residential factor. Each and every one of them needs to actually apply, and each and every one of those applications need to be considered and acted on by the Board of Assessors. And all that would have to happen before or right after, you know, by September so that we can get the tax bills out right after town meeting. That's not likely to happen without a big effort. So what would happen in that circumstance, if that were the case, is we would not be able to issue the tax bills after town meeting. We'd have to keep holding them until we finalize all of the application process. And so that would cause a delay in setting the tax rate, which would cause cash flow issues, which would cause us probably have to borrow money to get through the cash flow issues. So I've never been opposed to any position any Board ever has ever wanted to take. I've always just asked that you have that consideration of the timeline and the timing and the work involved in going into that. So I just suggest, if you're inclined to want to do this at any point in time, talk to Jackie and myself so we can line that up with the assessors and make sure we have plenty of time to do that. That's all.
And Rich, we did go over that in November, and we asked them to give us their decision by January 1st. So that was the, they agreed to that formula. So if you were to want to move towards this, you really should do it for next year, not this year.
With a decision by January 1st for 2022.
That's correct.
That's the most feasible way to make it happen for all players in this, for everybody that has to do all the legwork. Okay. Amy?
Yeah, I was just going to say to Art, and as Jackie pointed out, in January, we decided what to do for this year. And you can look, those meetings in January, where we talked about it in depth, and there were great presentations about, you know, what a 10, a 20, a 30%. I think we did 10, 20, 30, or maybe we did 20, 30, 20.
We started at 20 because 10 seemed...
It didn't, yeah.
And yeah, you can really see where that breakpoint moves and how, when you're 50-50, it really is imbalanced. And I think as you get higher, and we figured 60 was about the, you know, the best trigger for two years. So, you know, at this point, that's a ways out before that really would make sense, I think, to...
Rich?
I'll set up a meeting with Belinda.
Awesome. That'd be great.
Over those numbers.
Okay. And like, we could go over the, get you the dates of the other meetings so you can watch on video also.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna, or, let's see if there's anyone else on the Board. I'm just going to follow up to a little bit with what's been said. Because as everyone knows, last year, this was a really thoughtful point for me. And it has been, since I've been on this Board, every year I kind of struggle with this. And being the year that it has been, I really thought hard about it because it's different now. And I have to, I have to say, I do believe it is different now for a lot of our year-round residents with what they're struggling with. To address the exemptions in our town, my concern is that the bulk of our exemptions are for people who are over 60 years old or for seniors. And that doesn't help young working families that are trying to make it here. It doesn't cut it. Our exemptions, the state doesn't offer exemptions for that population. I know that we've tried, you know, thinking about ways to brainstorm to try and get the state to, you know, provide something, but they don't. And it's unfortunate. Additionally, I understand there are outliers with second homes. To Amy's point, that there are people who maybe didn't choose to be in a situation where they have a second home or it's in trust. There's complicated situations. There's outliers to everything. I mean, there's going to be outliers to this exemption. You can't help that. But the fact is that in the majority of cases, to own a second home is a luxury. And to be able to profit off that second home is an even greater luxury that people who are living and working here in the only home that they can own don't have. And it's a disservice of this Board to not acknowledge that. I'm not saying that we have to change our minds and move forward with the residential tax exemption at this time, but we need to acknowledge it and understand that. And I think we have been, with the family care package is a great step. I think that that is a really powerful thing that this town has put together and Jackie's worked really hard on. And I'm really thankful it's there. But I do think that we have to do more. We have to do a little better. We have to pull out more tools as we move through a year that has been so challenging for so many families. And now, moving into a school year where parents are going to find it even harder to work full-time, and they're going to be facing even more challenges in their household. So I really strongly urge this Board to think about adding another tool for these year-round families that need them, and they don't have them. I'd like to see the Board sit with this for another January consideration for 2022. I understand how difficult it can be to push forward for 2021, and I wouldn't want to put the people who work hard in that position. But, you know, that's how I feel about it.
Can I just add one thing, too? I mentioned about the deferred taxes, but we're also going to be doing a taxation fund. So people, if they want to pay an extra hundred dollars or something on their taxes, that will go into a taxation fund. And people that are having trouble with their taxes can then go and apply for money from the taxation fund. So that's the other thing of that, is go into town meeting.
Can I ask a question on our 21, our financial hardship tax deferral? Is that an elderly deferral or hardship in general?
It's hardship in general, and that's down to the Board of Assessors to decide that.
Yeah. Okay, so we do, we have put at least one exemption in place after town meeting.
Well, it's a deferral, right, not an exemption?
It's a deferral, absolutely.
Okay.
But you won't lose your house, and you won't go hungry, and you won't, you know...
Which is pretty important.
People never have to move out of their house because they can't pay taxes.
Especially in our, I think, as people live here longer, the value of their house is, their equity is much bigger than their income.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, that happens.
It's a useful tool. It really is.
That definitely happens here. Amy, it looks like you have something?
Yeah, just real quick on the, you know, the family support package. I think, yeah, that was brilliant of Jackie to come up with that. Because you're right, Jamie, there aren't a lot of exemptions for younger people. But, you know, even if we did this, say we shifted it, now the residential taxes exemption, maybe a few hundred bucks for someone, you know, in a $400,000 house. Where the family support package, you know, it's potentially thousands of dollars for a family per year. So, you know, really, if need be, if we need to increase that next year, you know, if this continues on this, you know, quasi-shutdown we're still in, you know, for long term, maybe that needs to go up because that would spread things a little more evenly across the, you know, the tax base, where, you know, potentially those families in need could really see a much bigger benefit than any residential tax exemption would ever give. So...
I'm just going to check. Al, did you want to say something? I see you're off mute.
Yeah, I wanted to see if we can get, can you hear me all right, by the way? It keeps cutting in and out.
You're good.
I wanted to get a little more on the metric of the lead time, if possible, Jackie. Meaning, you know, you'd made some comments there about us having to borrow money and the timeline to get the tax bill out.
Yeah.
Can I get, is it possible, or is it not too much of a burden to actually get that metric to see what it would cost us, or?
No, I think this year is different than any other year, Al, because we are having town meeting at the end of September instead of May. So we're already timed. So we're already lost three months. So we are going to be struggling between town meeting and when we normally get the tax bills out. Normally, we would be getting the tax bills out in September, and we're going to barely be able to probably get them out November 1st. So we're going to already have our money this year because we will run out of cash before we start getting tax revenues. So...
How much is that going to cost us to borrow that cash?
What? I'm sorry?
I said, I said, and let me get, just so we understand, because it keeps cutting in and out. How about I just go ahead and email my request to you directly? Because I just, like I said, I wanted to see what was going to, you know, essentially what I'm getting is we're going to have to... what I'm getting is, we're gonna have to borrow money because of the tax bills not getting out? Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding here?
No, you're correct. You're correct.
That rates 2.5% to 3% currently.
2.5% to 3%. And if we, for whatever reason, if the board said, "We wanna do this residential tax exemption right now," that would put more financial burden on the taxpayer, in fact, because we'd have to borrow more money. I'm just trying to get the Reader's Digest here version, so I understand that.
That's correct. So, you know, I have to determine our cash flow. In a best-case scenario, it's probably cutting it close to whether we have to borrow on a short-term basis or not. If we're not gonna issue the bills by early October, because we've gotta come up with what an application process is and actually go through the 3,100 applications and make a determination, which is probably, I'm guessing, four to six-month process, we'd have to borrow money, for sure, starting mid-October through that time period, at, you know, probably 2.5% to 3%. So you're talking, you know, somewhere between $5 and $9 million is off the top of my head guess of what the cash flow need would be.
So that's primarily, Al, why we told you in November that we needed to know by January of each year. So basically, if you make this decision, you have to make it in the winter so that Belinda and her staff and Rich have time to do this whole application process. And then there's an appeals process as well. So it's like, there's an application process, there's a vetting...
Hello, hello.
So, Al, I think the best move, and, you know, the board can agree or disagree with this, but I think the best move at this point is to vote to move forward for what we have on our plate for this year, being as we're already behind schedule, to not further cause, you know, more difficulty...
I apologize, it keeps cutting out on me here.
Al, what I'm saying, Al, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm suggesting that we vote tonight on 2021, and that we revisit this at a date no later than January to make a decision for 2022. I do see some hands up from the board, so I'm gonna call...
I had one more thing, Jamie, is, you know, I would feel better if Art was brought up more to speed before we vote on that. If it, I would ask to move the vote to the next meeting. So Art, I'd feel better if Art had all the information, but that's just my opinion.
Well, Al, I agree, but I think we have to get this done tonight because of the deadline and the fact that we don't wanna push this out even further than we've already pushed it out since we're so far behind with tax bills. I think bringing Art up to speed for a decision made in January makes total sense so that we can move into 2022 on the same page. Seeing nodding heads, I still see one hand up. So, Al, I'm gonna call on Jared.
All right. First, to Amy's point, which I totally agree with about the family care package, that's great, but we don't know if it's gonna go through yet. And also, for your point, as you said, if it's only a couple hundred bucks, then why are we making such a big deal out of not doing it? That's my first point. And the second is, why are we talking about this in August if we can't really think about it? If the decision has to be made in January, then why don't we make this decision in January every year?
Jared, I hate to be a pain, but we had this whole discussion between November and January, and as far as I'm concerned, you already made the decision. You have to vote on it every August, because that's when we have to move to set the tax rate, okay? But you made the decision, you directed us in a certain direction...
In January.
In January, for this year. So I'm sorry that it's confusing, but I do think that if you want to change your mind, you need to wait until next year to do it. And the big deal isn't for residents. Residents, most of them, will save a couple of hundred dollars or more, but a lot of them will pay more, and the non-resident taxes, the non-residents will pay more than that couple of hundred, because there's more of them. So that's what we saw when we looked at the spreadsheet, and we can revisit the whole thing again. I'm just, I think you're, I try never to tell you guys what to do, but I think it makes me so anxious to even be talking about this at a time when we have been struggling just to keep moving forward, and we're already so behind this year, that I do think that it is not a good idea to alter it right now. It's only three, I mean, November is a few months away. So we could be talking about the whole thing, sort of like a half a year we have here, because we've already marched through the first couple of months of this quarter by the time we do, by this year, and by the time we do town meeting, we'll be done with the first quarter of the year. So we'll be, you know, in May, town meeting, before you know it.
And I think that's why this feels a little off, Jared, is because in January, we made a decision that we were expecting to be implementing closer to March, April, May.
We always have the classification hearing in August.
Right, but...
But we knew that you were thinking about this. So we did it so that you'd have time to think about it, make a policy decision, so that staff would know how to proceed for this tax year.
Let me just add that it's a procedural issue, really, Jared. The assessors are charged with evaluating property as of January 1 of each year, and so that process happens in the winter and spring, and the Department of Revenue has to do there. They have a part in the process, and they have to validate and approve those values, which usually happens in June or July, which is why you have the tax classification hearing in July or August. And Eastham is at the top of that list as far as getting that work done and in front of the Department of Revenue every single year. So it's not, it really is a timing issue with the Department of Revenue, that you can't quite get it much earlier than we get it in a normal year.
Want to ask a really dumb question?
Absolutely, they're the best ones.
Can you set a different tax rate for property over a certain amount of money?
No.
You can't do that legally.
No, I don't think there's any state provision or state law that would, any national law that would let that happen.
But this kind of does that. The residential exemption does that in a certain way.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Yeah, because it does in a certain way, you're right. But what it is, is it takes the average family value home, and then that is deducted from all the people that are residents.
Residents, residents, but the problem with it, Art, is that residents that have a certain house value will pay over $1,000, will pay a lot more, not a little more, a lot more.
A lot more.
Saw that on the sheets.
40%.
Regardless of what their income is. So I know in Wellfleet, when I was a selectman, there were an awful lot of people that were house-rich and income-poor, because they had lived in these houses all their lives, and suddenly, they were worth, you know, tons of money. And there was nothing we could do to adjust it for those people, other than find another exemption. So I don't think that's a terrific problem that Eastham has. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying that that's, some of the hang-ups with this that we get into are that it's not based on income. So you're giving, you know, you're giving the exemption regardless of income, just on the value of the home.
If there's no disagreement from the board, I'm gonna push this to a vote for 2021 with the same plan as we did last time, where we re-vote again in January about how we wanna move forward for 2022. I'd like to maybe have, we'll do a couple agenda items, a couple meetings where we see some presentations again, and that'll give Art time to meet with Belinda, too.
Yeah, and we'll just, Rich, we'll have to start putting it on their agenda so that they know it's coming in November and December.
Yeah. Jared?
Yeah, just real quick. Thanks for the answers. I totally am in agreement with you here. It's just that the world has changed a lot between January and this particular year. But I think basically what we can all agree on is that the residential tax exemption is a really crappy exemption, that's way too complicated and doesn't help enough people. And if there's anything else we can find in the toolbox or make ourselves in order to help people, I think that's something that should be looked into.
And we are doing a good job of doing that.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate it. The board has done to bring forward these other options to help people out. I just think if there's a way that we can help more people that live here and work here and are trying to stay here, because the face of the town in the Outer Cape is changing, and it would be a good thing for us to try to stop that and try to keep things the way that they've been. So I agree here, and I just think we gotta come up with something, that's all.
Yeah. I'll definitely make sure that this comes back up, and we'll have an answer in January for 2022.
Okay.
All right. So I'm, or someone, can I get a motion?
You have four of them.
We have four. Can we do them?
I'll go ahead and make the first motion to continue the use of residential factor of 1.
Can I get a second? Art, second. Okay, and roll call, Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the first motion passes.
All right, I'll move to not grant a discount to open space.
I'll second.
Second, Mark. Okay, Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I.
I'll make a motion to move to not grant the residential exemption.
Second.
Okay. Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. And last one.
I move to not to grant a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Okay. Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Aye. Now, do we need to make a motion to revisit this, or is this something we just bring that up on?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and keep the meeting open. So once we do have town meeting, we set the tax rate, then you can go ahead and approve the LA 5 excess capacity.
So we're gonna continue the public hearing until...
After the, yeah.
What's the first meeting in October? I don't have my, I have my stuff.
I might. I'll get it set up with Lori.
Okay.
Okay. And this year, the select board doesn't need to sign. They've changed, the Department of Revenue has changed that the Board of Assessors sign.
Great. Is October 5th?
Yeah, the 5th.
Okay.
All right, we'll continue to October 5th.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you, and thank you, Board, for being patient with me. I understand the municipal calendar, we live and die by it, but it is so hard to understand, you know, until you go through a couple of cycles. And so I think we're going through a couple of cycles together, and then it'll start to become obvious to you, but there's a lot of moving pieces that we have to be considering at all times.
Yeah, I agree. That was great, and the discussion will continue, so thank you very much. All right, gonna move to the next item on here. So we're gonna have the Route 6 update with Paul Lag. Paul is there. Paul is muted.
All right, how's that? Better?
Better.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just wanna provide the board with an update on our Route 6 project. Just as a quick reminder, you know, the goal of the project was really to look at the corridor, the roadway itself, look at potential upgrades for traffic safety, but also amenities for enhancements for bicycle and pedestrian, and also enhance access to and from the businesses all along the corridor, and look at the curb cuts. So we're trying to do this as we try to do everything in a comprehensive manner, looking at what we have going on with our strategic plan initiative, and also, most recently, the T-Time initiative. So when we first got started, this was sort of before those two other initiatives came online. So once we, once we sort of saw what action items came out of the strategic plan and T-Time, I kind of put a little bit of a hold on the project, just because what we're trying to do now is look at all the areas where these initiatives overlap, and there are quite a few, and figure out a way that we can really coordinate our effort, because as we, as we come down the line, there's gonna be some things that we need to line up, especially when we look at T-Time redevelopment and Route 6. And so we initially started, you know, out of the gate, we were doing a lot of field work. Should mention, we're working closely with the transportation folks at the Kibbutz Commission and with Silvio and our DPW. And, you know, so back in 2019, when we first started, we were doing, we did a lot of data, traffic counts, a lot of field work, started to crunch those numbers. We had a public listening session back in February, where we kind of did existing conditions analysis and got some feedback. And then we really dove into alternatives analysis, and what could we do with the roadway and to come up with some conceptual designs. But like I said, in the interim, we've had T-Time, and we had finalized the strategic plan. And again, so I always like to take a comprehensive approach, try to line things up as best we can, so that we're not duplicating efforts or, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot with one thing and not the other. So, and then, of course, with COVID, things got a little bit backed up. So where we are now is, we have some, we're starting to put together some alternatives. We wanna have a public information session and kind of vet those design alternatives, and then kind of bring this along in steady fashion with T-Time, because that's gonna be an important point for this whole corridor. So in the report I put in the board's packet, you know, the alternatives review, what we're looking at really at this point is, we did narrow the scope of the project, because initially, we're looking at the whole stretch of Route 6. And after we started to talk more and more with MassDOT, because we're trying to work closely with them, just to make sure that we're keeping our heads in reality with what, you know, with what the state is gonna be willing to accept, they really encouraged us to just narrow it down. So we're really looking, focusing on that stretch between Massasoia up through T-Time, and really to see what we can do. And that, you know, coincides with our main commercial district and the zoning and so forth. So at this point, we're looking at that, focusing on that section. We did look at different lane configurations, and actually maybe taking it down to two lanes like we have in Wellfleet, but that was really a non-starter with MassDOT, based on traffic flow and what they need to, what they see as their need to handle the traffic volumes. And so at this point, we're really looking at maintaining the four lanes that we have now, but what can we do to really increase the safety? So we're looking at things such as raised medians, protected left-hand turns, and most notably, some roundabouts to help break up the traffic. And the roundabout, I included a concept sketch, most notably at T-Time. And again, that's one of those points where what happens at T-Time and Route 6...
Sorry, I think Art has...
Yeah, go ahead, Art.
I'm trying to understand why it's okay to have two lanes in Wellfleet, you know, one each, you know, one single lane each way, and not okay to have that in Eastham? What, how does, how does the state say that the traffic is different, that it's okay to do it in Wellfleet, but it's not okay to do it in Eastham?
If I, if I had gotten a good answer to that, I would share it with you, but we never did. It's more of, this is the way it is, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna decrease the lanes. They think that, you know, there is a choke point, obviously, when you get into Wellfleet, but they just were not open at all to reducing the lanes. And we made all the arguments about why, you know, why, you know, it's like, just like you said, why Eastham and not anywhere else? Why do we have to be a four-lane race strip only to, you know, slow down at the town line? We just really never got anywhere, and it was really clear that going down that route was gonna be a non-starter. And we did look at, sorry, I know you have a question, Amy. We did look at, you know, could we even reduce the lanes at a different point, you know, further back from Wellfleet, so that we have some stretch in Wellfleet, in Eastham, where it is two lane, four lanes go down to two? But we always have the same problem, no matter where you do it, you're gonna have a choke point. So if we started it, you know, in front of Town Hall, we'd have the backups that we have at Wellfleet, that Town Hall... we'd have the backups that we have at Wellfleet, at Town Hall and so forth, so there's just, I wish I had a better answer, but it was just basically a non-starter. You know, they, they look at the traffic, they look at the traffic flow, the volumes, and they say, you know, we have a good flow through Eastham, we know we have a Wellfleet issue, but we're not gonna just back up the problem further into Eastham, that's how they look at it, so.
Don't you think that one of the big things is that they, they think that they made a mistake with Wellfleet? I, I think they think they made a mistake with Wellfleet, and they don't wanna continue to make the mistake, but it, it would, if you think about it, we could have the choke point be like the Orleans Rotary.
Yeah.
Backed up and lots of-
Yeah, and that's, oh yeah, and I, I mean, they, they never, they, they would never come forth with that, but I'm sure that's part of it, and, but the reality is, we have the volumes we have, and it's hard, even, you know, for our local effort, when we're, you know, Sylvia and I, Sylvia and I were looking at it with the transportation folks, and it's like, you know, it's, it's hard to justify reducing the two lanes, and there's a lot of benefits for the, you know, aesthetic purposes and slowing things down, and, and having more of a Main Street feel, but we're gonna have that traffic problem, and sorry, Amy, you had a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point out that I, you know, I've been a proponent for a road diet, called to, to reduce from four to three lane, basically, where you have one, one travel lane in each direction, and then the center left turn lane. And, you know, I've kind of pushed and pushed and pushed for this for, it, it's like 10 years now. And someone at the commission, I think it was Steve Tupper, maybe, maybe it was Steve, or Lev, one of them, really pointed out that it's curb cuts. In Eastham, we have probably 10 times the number of curb cuts that Wellfleet has, in the same stretch, you know, of miles. And you just, for everyone turning right or left, you would really create backups, especially the right turns, believe it or not. I mean, the left turns, if you have the center-left turn lane, you can ease that, but it's the right turns that would really be impacted by, you know, reducing the number of lanes, so I think it's, it's curb cuts, when, when you look, you know, you really drill down to the, to the main cause of not reducing the lanes, it, it's curb cuts, and we have so many that it, it just, unless we do access roads on the side the whole way, which would be ridiculous, I think, you know, it's, it's just not gonna happen, but I really like these traffic calming, you know, ideas, and I would even like to see, you know, this, this draft proposal shows a roundabout at Massa Sawyer potentially, and one at tee time, and then it talks about the Fairway and the Mercantile, that area. I would like to see even a light there, not just pedestrian crossing, but, you know, people could go across, directly across the street, you know, through a light, and, and make left turns at a light. I think that would really help, you know, people get safely in and out of those areas.
Yeah.
Generally, I, I, you know, it's curb cuts, we, we just have so many curb cuts that it's really, we've tried to, I know Paul's worked really hard with businesses to try to combine, to reduce, but it's, you know, it's private property, it's really hard to get that reduced, so that's our biggest hurdle.
So that, that's really where the coordinate, Amy, you bring up a good point, that's where the coordination with all of these other efforts is important. And so then, that kind of gets us into the strategic plan part of this, and there's a lot of action items in the plan that talk about working with, you know, economic development, working with the businesses for the redevelopment, so it's straddling this, the transportation and the zoning piece kind of combined into the economic development, and one of the actions for the plan was to really reach out to the business owners and the property owners, and see if we could get interested in doing some, you know, creating a business improvement district, and some other, you know, tax, tax programs that are available to the state, to try to take the curse off of the investment that's needed on the, on the private property side. And that's where we get into consolidating curb cuts and improving access on the private part. So we're, so, again, part of this kind of comprehensive approach and coordinating these efforts, as we get into this next phase, you know, in this, in the next year, that's gonna be where we're gonna try to roll out those strategic plan action items, and I know we're gonna have a new planner coming on board to help me with that effort and really focus on that, so that, and, you know, that got kind of backed up with the COVID and town meeting, and, and having that come on board, so, but the plan is moving forward to kind of have all these projects as best we can move forward in, 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 in coordination, because they're gonna have to line up somewhat, so that, you know, I mean, funding-wise, construction-wise, but also just knowing what the overall game plan, what the community wants, so. That's, you know, where the curb cuts, the private property, and the, and the roadway itself start to overlap. And I think curb cuts is a, is a big part of it, but I think what we're trying to do is knowing the things where the state is gonna not budge on it, we're trying to just say, what do we have that's an asset to work with, and what we do have is a law, a large right-of-way, it's very wide right-of-way along most of the whole stretch through Northeastham, and so we actually have the room to say if we're gonna be stuck with the four lanes, we can do, you know, a raised median, and maybe that's a nice planted landscaped median that, that gets, you know, takes some of the aesthetic issues and helps us with that, we can do protective left turns to take the curse off of some of the left turns, but I think a key part are these roundabouts, and I know there's strong feelings on, on, you know, for and against, but we really think the roundabout, especially at tee time, and again, we have a large right-of-way, a lot of width, but then if we can work with a little bit of the tee times property itself, we don't think we'll really have to do any takings on the other side to, you know, get the, to get the, the siding for it, and it won't really cut in much, you know, to tee time itself, so there's plenty of room with what we're gonna do there, so. So I think the roundabout really does a lot, it facilitates the traffic in and out of tee time, whatever may go there. It provides turning opportunities, you know, if you need to, you know, change direction on Route 6, you don't have to deal with dangerous left turn, or do, or do, you know, all these right-hand turns, get back, so there's a lot of benefits that we see, but the next phase is really to, to build that concept out, get some feedback from the public, and start to get into the next phase, but again, that has to be in tandem with, with tee time. And so I did share the roundabout concept sketch with some of the tee time infrastructure sub-group, they were favorable to it, and we're gonna bring that to the, to the larger group, the full committee, get their feedback, because I wanted them to be aware of that early on in our visioning process for, for that property, so.
Yeah, I like it. Thank you, Paul. Are there, Art?
Did you have any discussions with them relative to the speed limit on Route 6?
I, no, we haven't really gotten into that. But-
Is that still an area of opportunity?
I think where that will come into effect, into play, is, is when we get to the point where we're seriously talking about, you know, the, the things like the median and the, and the turn lanes, because those are gonna be, if those are implemented, those are going to be traffic calming, and to a certain extent, traffic slowing mechanisms, we hope, and so whether it's an actual reduction in the speed limit, that we, if we can get that or not, but I think it would, the, the result, the overall result will be that we want, when you come into Northeastham, we want, we want actual infrastructure that gives you visual cues that you, you're coming into an area where you need to slow down, you're coming into our town center, there's more activity, there's more people gonna be in and out of the businesses and the curb cuts, so even if we don't get, I guess, even if we don't get an actual reduction in the speed limit, I think we can affect the speed through that section if we get the right infrastructure in place.
It would give us a stronger case to argue for a reduced speed limit.
Yeah, and that, so, yeah, that might be the, the leverage that we get to just make it a reality, you know.
Are there any other questions from the Board? Paul, do you have anything else you wanted to say too?
No, again, just, just so the Board, I just wanna make sure you're aware, you know, as I said, we really are trying to do this in coordination with these other efforts, and I think going into this winter, we're gonna really try to kickstart our efforts with Route 6, but also tying it in with the economic development piece, because again, it's the, what happens on the private property side and the redevelopment has to, has to be in alignment with, with Route 6, so. We're trying to just coordinate those two efforts.
Well, Paul, as you know, I'm, this is my hot button, I mean.
I know.
So I'm available for whatever you need to work on this. If you need some help or representation, or just somebody to sit in meetings, I'm more than available to do it. And I'll try, I'll try and not be an idiot in a meeting, but I can guarantee it.
No, I appreciate that, and obviously, you, you're involved with the strategic plan, and you were on planning board, so I think, you know, I'd, I'd welcome your assistance, because you're already familiar with the background, and you know where we're trying to go, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Alright, next, we're gonna go over to Shayna Brogan, the Center of Coastal Studies, NASA Estuary Update.
Hi, Shayna Brogan, Conservation Agent, and for the past month or so, the Nocet Estuary Stakeholder Group has been meeting, I think we met about three times now, and we've been discussing various subjects at length and in detail. The first one is revisions to the timeline for the existing memorandum of understanding between the towns of Orleans and Eastham. And basically, that's just some changes to the timeline due to COVID. And then, we've also been discussing a request for a special review procedure, which is a coordinated review between the state and federal officials of this dredging project. And we should be getting a response from them in mid-October. And then, we've also been discussing in detail the management of dredge spoils, so because there is such a large volume with the 50-foot channel, it's about 137,000 cubic yards, so we've been discussing at length sort of what the protocols might be for managing that amount of sediment, and we kind of came to the sort of consensus that a management plan might be the best opportunity to figure out what, what could happen with those dredge spoils and the dewatering, because dredging for the entire length of the channel is gonna take a long time, and it's gonna be a lot of material, so there needs to be a system set in place that the regulatory agencies are probably also going to want to see. We've also been discussing the 50- or 100-foot wide channel, there has not been a consensus to date at this point, as to whether or not that should be, you know, what the, the width of that channel should be. We are waiting on an evaluation from the Woods Hole Group as to what the difference between the tidal flat dredging is going to be in the 50 versus 100-foot channel. And then, we're also waiting on a number of different items, so we're looking to receive a dredge feasibility study that the Town of Orleans is working on. We're looking at hearing back from the Town of Orleans's County Dredge meeting that they'll be having with them out at the inlet, to talk to them about what they think the dredging logistics might look like for their new program that they've just recently put together. And we're also going to be evaluating a draft matrix that the Woods Hole Group is going to be populating. And that's pretty much it, that's what we'll be looking at for the next month. And then, with the Province Town Center for Coastal Studies, they are going to be developing a barrier inlet configuration from 2020 to 2017. So they'll be putting together what the inlet might look like, and then Nocet Spit might look like over the next 50 years. So they'll be projecting that based off of coastal processes and what their aerial photography results come back to, to say. And we should be getting that in the spring of 2021.
So, the first, the first piece is the Nocet Estuary dredge that we're doing in conjunction with Orleans. And you will have those reports that Shayna was mentioning, they're promising those to us by mid-September to late September. And then they'll need a decision about whether you wanna proceed in October. When are we supposed to have the study results for the health, that health study on the estuary? You won't, that's the second piece, that's Province Town Center for Coastal Studies. Okay. And because of COVID, they weren't able to do the drone flying and some of the stuff they were gonna do this spring, so that's postponed, but I actually think it could be better, because Shayna and I met with Mark, and what he's gonna do is do a dredge, I mean, a dredge, a, a flyover, drone flyover in the fall, and then another one in the spring, so that you can really see if there are winter storms, how they impact the beach, so we can start to see over time, you know, whether it's a normal back and forth, or there's actually some change in, in the beach. But we have only $30,000 left over from our first appropriation for the Province Town Coastal Studies, and then what's the remaining, and then there's $75,000 in the capital plan for the warrant on the town meeting. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and authorize him to do some things, assuming that the capital plan will, will be there. So they won't line up in terms of, you'll have to make a decision about whether to continue to support Orleans in their desire to dredge. Basically, that's the, the, the decision, without knowing your, the other data, but it will be coming way before this thing is permitted too, so, you know. And there will be no charge to the Town of Eastham for the research going into the permitting that Orleans is doing? Well, we're not, that's another decision that's coming up, but it, Amy might wanna talk to that, or do you wanna talk to that piece, Amy?
Yeah, I was gonna wait until later in the agenda, when we talked about the MOU and the, their scope of services.
I just wanted you to see how those two things, they don't line up perfectly, but I think our study is, you know, I think the study that Coastal Studies is doing is going to help us, help us get a baseline from when they did it five years ago, when they're doing it this year, next year, and it's gonna help future Boards decide what to do in that environment, if we keep doing that, so it's, it's so useful, it's not a waste of money at all, whether we use it for this dredge or something else, it will, it will serve us well, and I think this is what, you know, it'll also help, Al and Jared have been asking these questions too, like, you know, how come, how come Woods Hole Group finds, and Shayna and I, in the meetings, they find 318 Cohogs, well, we know there are people that are out there, yeah. So I think it'll help us answer some of those questions and have real data points behind them, so. It's invaluable for the town and the town's future. Can we work that into a five-year budget, like the-
I think we should.
We work that into being done, because I think that is important information to have.
Yeah.
For-
Jamie, can I make a comment when you get a second?
Oh yeah. Al, you can go ahead.
He's muted.
Unmute yourself. Can we unmute him? Sometimes we have to forcefully mute and unmute him.
I ultimately asked him to unmute him.
Al, go ahead, there you go.
Yeah, can you hear me now, it was, this, this connection's bad. I just wanted to reiterate what Jackie was saying, what the importance of having a bio essay of our resource area does is allows us to also exploit any economical, economic benefit from the resource area to the resident as well, which we've never had. I think the goal would, when we originally talked to do it with the estuary was because it was in conjunction with the dredge project, but we really should pursue that type of research into Cape Cod Bay, where we have miles of resource area that we're directly responsible for, that we don't have any biodata on, that we don't know truly what's happening in the resource area, and I think, you know, having that information is, is going to pay off huge for us in the future to maintain, grow, or draw back our activities in, in our natural resource areas, so. I, I don't think it's a waste of money at all, and I just wanted to make, make that public comment.
I think so.
That's all.
Is there anyone else on the board that has anything they'd like to say? I'm trying to back over to Shayna.
That's pretty much all I have. It's still an ongoing discussion and lots of information that we'll be looking through in the next month or two.
Great. Now, this is helpful. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
She's doing an amazing job holding around with that group.
Yeah, I have no doubt. Thanks, Shayna.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to Chief Kent Ferencoff for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant and award granted to the fire department. Oh, I can't hear Kent.
Where are you going?
He's not muted. Hold on, Kent. We can't hear you.
We want the chief, right?
Yeah, the chief, yep.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I got two good items I'd like to talk to you about. The first one is, Eastham Fire Department has received the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award for implementing quality improvement measures for the treatment of patients who experience severe heart attack and strokes. Every year, more than 250,000 people experience ST elevation, myocardial infarctions, the deadliest type of heart attack caused by blockage of blood flow to the heart that requires timely treatment. To prevent death, it's critical to restore the blood flow as quickly as possible, either by mechanically opening the blocked vessel or by providing clot-busting medication. The Mission Lifeline Initiative provides tools, training, and other resources to support heart attack care following protocols from the most recent evidence-based treatment guidelines. Mission Lifeline's EMS recognition program recognizes emergency medical services for their efforts in improving systems of care, rapidly identifying suspected heart attack patients, promptly notifying Cape Cod Hospital, and triggering an early response from the awaiting hospital personnel, such as activating the cath lab. EMTs and paramedics play a vital part of the system of care for those who have heart attacks since they often are the first medical point of contact. They save precious minutes of treatment time by quickly evaluating the patient, reading of the EKG to determine the patient is having a heart attack, administration of medication, and by activating the emergency response system to alert hospitals of the incoming heart attack patient. The five main points here is early recognition. This is people calling us right away so we can get there and treat them. Quick use of an EKG and with their interpretation that they are having an ST elevation, which is indicated that they're having a major blockage. Rapid identification of other signs of the heart attack, early notification of the hospital, the cath lab. Many times when we take somebody into the cath lab, we notify the hospital prior to us getting there. And the cath lab is waiting for us when we roll the patient in. Sometimes by the time we do our paperwork and get out of the hospital, they've already opened up that blockage and prevented any damage. So it's amazing what this early identification and early alerting has done and the life that it's saved. And the biggest thing is the early perfusion to get that vessel open and prevent any heart attack issues. I want to thank my staff, highly professional, highly trained. Five years ago, when I started here, we did receive a bronze award for this. And we've gone from bronze to silver to gold to gold plus. So our numbers are right there, the professional service that they're providing, and the life that they're saving is tremendous. So kudos to my people and the professional level that they work at. The second one that I'm very happy to announce to the board, Eastham Fire just received the Assistance to Firefighters Grant for $47,715,000. This is to replace our air compressor that we already have in the station. 2001, when they built the station, is when they installed it. This air compressor is the compressor that we use to fill our breathing air when we go into a fire. It's highly purified air. We had a problem with the system this year. The company that manufactured our compressor that we presently have is out of business and not producing it anymore. We can't get the computer boards. The last time they fixed it, I think they had to go on eBay to get an old one to put into it. So this was going to come up as a replacement, probably for next year at the cost of approximately $50,000. So we applied for this grant and we got it. The town's part of it. It's a 5% match. So almost $2,400 is the town side and the $47,000 is on the fed side. So great savings to the taxpayer, something that we have to have in order to do our business. I'd like to thank firefighter paramedic Ryan Vianbuskog. Ryan does a lot of my grant writing. He's excellent at it. He did another great job on this one and was able to get this grant for us. I want to thank the deputy who manages the grants for me, a lot of paperwork in processing the money. I'm very proud to say, in the five years I've been here with the help of my staff, we brought in over $875,000 in grants so far to help the taxpayer and offset the tax rate. I want to thank Administrator Beebe. She's always there for me to support me in these grants and push them forward. So thanks to everybody out there and thanks for your support and some good news for the town. So thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Eastham Fire Department is awesome.
Thank you. We do our best.
I know. I'm there all the time.
Thank you, chief.
Alrighty.
All right, now onto the fun part. Public meeting, town meeting warrant review.
Yay.
And discussion. Votes will be taken. So we're going to review and vote on the warrant articles. So I guess we do these one by one and I need a motion for each warrant article. Is that correct?
Yeah, or you can do, you know, a few.
Just call them off?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think unless there's any discussion from the board, I'll call each one off. And if there's discussion, we'll pause before voting.
You can see the ones you've taken a vote on before with the board.
Yep, exactly. And we're revoting on everything.
I think so.
Yep.
It's probably easier to just do that.
Yep, okay. So jump right in. Article one, establish a water enterprise fund. So I'm going to just roll call unless there's discussion. So does anyone have any discussion on article one? Nope. Okay, roll call. Amy. Amy froze. So we're going to jump to Art. Okay, I from Art. Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye, I'm back.
Okay, and I'm I. Okay, Article two, annual operating budget. Do we have any discussion? Okay, I'm going to roll call. Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Sorry, got bumped in line on the screen now. All right, great. And I'm just going to scroll through them because it's the easiest way to. Water Enterprise Fund. Article three. It's 2A, I think. Oh, is it 2A? Article 2, Water Enterprise Fund Budget. No discussion, so I'm going to call a vote. Art?
This is Article 2A?
Yep. This is the budget for the Water Enterprise Fund.
I'm just trying to find it. Okay.
It's on page 11.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. Aye.
Okay, Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm I?
Aye.
Thank you. Article three, capital acquisition article. Any discussion? So we're going to vote. Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Aye. Article 3A, five-year capital plan. Any discussion? All right, I'll vote. Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
I. Article four, capital outlay upgrade, police radios, and dispatch equipment. And this is one that had gotten moved, right?
This has gotten moved and we've changed it, okay? So we've changed it to provide permanent funding of the capital plan, right? So it's a continuous override with the first year going to dispatch. So that is a change between last time and this time when you've seen it. We changed the language based on a strong recommendation from the Finance Committee that they would not support it unless we changed the language to say, provide for permanent funding of the capital plan.
So does that mean that every year there will be a permanent $100,000?
It means that the $400,000 rise in the levy will continue.
Okay.
It won't, if we had said the last time that it would be just a one-time thing. This will just continue for all time and it will be put towards capital.
Okay, so it's going to go toward capital, not toward.
Not towards anything else.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions from the board? Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
I. And Article five.
Now, you might want to start unless people have, oh, well, I guess collective bargaining. There's a whole bunch that are more, go ahead, keep going. When we get to zoning and community preservation, maybe we could do those as a block unless people have class rates.
Okay. Article five, fund betterment lawn program for water connection. Questions? Okay, calling the vote. Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
I. Article six, fund collective bargaining agreements. See no discussion. So Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm I. Okay, Article seven, correct, the NOSA Regional High School deed, which we reviewed. Do we have any discussion? Okay, Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm I. Is this where you want to lump them?
Probably not. We'll go through economic and community development because that's the override.
Yeah, so Article eight is the family support package. Any discussion? All right, Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm I.
And that did receive a full support of the Finance Committee, which was, I think, very amazing.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that. Article nine, visitor service board funding. Okay, I'm going to call the vote. Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm I. Article 10, Chamber of Commerce funding. Call that. Art?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Amy? Froze again. Al?
Art.
And I. See if we can get Amy unfrozen. Oh, we see a thumbs up. Okay. Okay. Article 11.
And I see the 400 coming this year. They were.
Yeah. Fund tea time planning and 400 committee. And this one I did want to open discussion on, the potential of shifting some of the funding per the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which I think is a good suggestion, that we would shift it to say the town will transfer from free cash $25,000 to be used for tea time committee and $5,000 to be used for the 400 commemoration, seeing a greater need for the future development of the tea time property. So I'm going to make a motion to change that, or can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to update the Article 11 to the adjusted funding. Is there a second? And then we'll have discussions.
I'll second it and just, do we have numbers to justify that basic reduction into the tea time? Or not to the tea time, but to the 400? I know we talked about it at our last meeting, that they thought, you know, they were getting a little more revenue from some of their sales, but we didn't get the justification at that time for their ask. But it's in our packet now in the information as far as their budget and what they've spent.
And they are asking for $10,000.
Yes.
This says we're going to give them five instead of 10?
That would be my motion, yes. And that we would move that to tea time.
Do you have any idea how tea time is planning to spend on?
Yes, we're doing a business, what do you call it, a survey of businesses, a study, a professionally done study of what's needed. What do we call it? Business assessment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because you want to develop an anchor and different types of.
Yeah, so it's basically studying the region and the town with what do we have, what do we need, what could make money and be valuable here. So that's why we're looking for the money this year.
Did we do that already before with the strategic planning and the surveys and all?
Yeah.
Or that Urban Institute?
No.
No.
Any more discussion from the board? Yeah, is there anyone from the committee or the public that would like to speak to this also? Make sure Deb, Jim, I see, and Tom. I can't tell if Tom is trying to speak. I think Tom is waving. Tom is trying to speak. You're muted, Tom.
Hold on one second.
Hold on, we'll see if we can get you to unmute. There we go.
Look, I would prefer Jim or Debbie to speak, but are they ready to speak?
I'm not seeing anyone unmuting themselves.
Okay. I'm just suggesting that Debbie and Jim spent a lot of time working on that multiple-page report that's at the very back of your packet. And it has the justification for the $10,000 there. And it just seems wrong to move on this without having looked at that.
Well, we did look at it, Tom. It wasn't in our packets. And I think all the board had access to that information from what the data.
I see. Has there been any discussion of that on the public forum?
Well, we had our last meeting where Jim was able to present on the budget. And then as far as public forum discussion on the latest slides that we received, we haven't had public discussion.
Okay, so I'm simply saying is that I'm the vice chair, I'm not the chair of the committee. But I've been very active, as you know, in this committee, that it seems appropriate to have. I want to hear a public discussion of that report before there's a vote to cut it in half. That's my, I'm just saying that, that's all.
It comes down to the monuments, right?
Yeah, the monuments were the big game changer. And the addition, some additional projects that had been added afterwards that I think aren't going to be added, like the metal signage and things like that. I would say, moving forward into 2021, if additional funding is needed, that that would be something that the 400 committee would come to the board with. But we had the 400 on the agenda the last meeting with open public comment.
All right, I'm simply asking, my more process question than a numbers question at this point. You have this document that came to you since the last meeting. And it seems to me appropriate to have a public discussion of that document before taking this vote to half the number. That's my only, I won't say anymore because I'm just repeating myself, but I just wanted to say that.
No, I appreciate that, Tom. And this is a public meeting setting, so that's what this is. That's why the motion was made and it was open up to discussion.
Is there any possibility, since you have, it looks like you've sold almost $11,000 worth of material? Is it possible that you could sell more between now and, you know, December? Like, could we keep raising money from the product sales that might help towards the monument stuff next year?
Obviously, there's a possibility. But you know well with COVID-19 that retail sales have been very difficult. And we're coming upon a less touristic time, of course. So there would not be an assurance of that, but there would be a hope for that.
Yeah, and I guess my concern in looking. Yeah, and I guess my concern in looking at the, it's beautifully prepared, and I truly wish we had had it at our last meeting when the presentation was scheduled and given. But it does seem like the budget keeps growing, from the presentation in 2019 to the presentation this August, a year later, the budget grew almost $30,000. So, what I guess I'm concerned with is the projects keep growing, they don't, we didn't agree on doing a certain thing, and now we're going to do a certain thing and it's going to be done. It seems like we have some creep going on, so that we've added the metal signs to the buildings, which don't, you know, I'm not sure where that came from. We've added now a display inside of Town Hall, which we're not sure where that comes from. I think the redoing of the monument out front is a really great idea, and I don't think the visitor area and plaque monument that we're doing off of Sanusette Road is going to cost that much money. It's going to be more like, do you want a bench, do you want a stone with the monument on it, and we can do some fundraising for that. So, I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to spending $10,000 more, it just seems like, you know, we agreed on a budget, the budget got larger, you gave, we were, you know, the town gave more money because the budget got larger, but now it's, it should be wrapping up at this point and not escalating even more.
As I said, I don't, I said my piece about process, that's it for me, thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the public or from the committee, Jim or Deb?
Well, I, my feeling is that we identified certain things as the, as we moved along. We thought that there were other things that were important to the town, and for the town to take advantage of at this time, things that hooked in, such as the monument, to think that's why some of these things were added on. We could have eliminated it, but we just thought that part of what we were doing needed to add and recognize some of these other projects, and whether, whether it came into this or not, Jamie, you made a real point that, as far as you're concerned, this ends at the end of this year, December 8. Maybe that was the idea behind putting the committee together originally. We've just seen it as something that's growing and that's important to the town to have for its future, and to recognize some of the things that are being done. We didn't have to add them, we thought it was important to the townspeople and for the legacy of the town. It certainly wasn't to put a strain on anybody in particular, that's the last thing that we wanted to do, because we're real stakeholders in the community, but also have a real concern about our legacy, heritage that we're going forward and what we'd leave for the next generation. And so, adding things like the monument, the display in town, it just seemed like the appropriate time and place to recognize these things. And that's where we were going with it.
I'm not saying it's not important, Jim, at all. I think what was missing last meeting was the amazing work that this group has done in all the video presentations, I mean, to pivot and do the exceptional work that you guys have done with all the programming online, and the website is stunning, and there's just tons of information and great, great material there. The Ian Saxon book is amazing, that is certainly awesome, and I think we can do something inside Town Hall, I don't know how much it will cost to fix the monument outside of Town Hall, I'm assuming that's more expensive because it's bronze or whatever, but I think we can do something in Town Hall that utilizes what you've already done, like the print that, montage that's been done, and some of the other things that we found, without adding additional expense to it, is all I think we're saying.
And Jackie, if I can say, I don't necessarily disagree, I think part of what would be important to us is that we collaborate on how, on what the Select Board thinks is right and what we're doing, and we can have a discussion on it and how to get there. The funding idea is, you know, this is part of what we're working on. You know, we want to add funds to that, I mean, that gift fund isn't doing anybody any good unless we use it, and using it for the monuments, using it for other things. And if the, if the, those signage, those emblems on what you want to have around town, I get it, and, you know, we were putting them in each building, but maybe there's only a need for one, and maybe a better one that says this is the 400th anniversary. I mean, these are things up for discussion, and it would be helpful if we had the collaboration with the Board so that we could get some of these things put together and structured. I think that it's something that would benefit the town. We put a lot of energy into the educational resources that we have in town in recognizing historic places and the conservation areas, and I think this is really important, it's part of what Eastham is. And I don't, we have no intent to try and vary from that, we're just making some suggestions about what could be there. Again, it's the collaboration that we need, we need some input for, okay, where are we going and what are we doing? And it just helps if we have some direction on occasion to do that, instead of coming to a meeting and saying that, you know, as far as we're concerned, that December 8 was the end of it. Well, you can't help but notice that all the others, especially Plymouth 400, has made a big deal about extending it into 2021, and it's certainly a recognizable date, seeing that the first Thanksgiving was actually next, in 400 years would be next year, not this year.
We haven't.
Not that we're doing anything.
It's not a part of that, Jim, so, you know, we, the last time we sat down and talked to you was literally a year ago. So, you guys have done some awesome things in that year, but the Board of Selectmen certainly wasn't, and I don't mean to defend you guys, but they weren't aware that Plymouth had made decisions to continue it or whatever, and I guess, from my perspective too, I do think we should have some kind of a major thing on December 8. I mean, I thought that that was always the plan, and I love the idea of having the service in the morning and maybe something else in the evening or whenever.
And I think that's kind of how the board had been presented with all of this too, and that is why I mentioned that, you know, it was my thought that it came to an end on that date, because that's how it's been presented to the board this whole time. And that's why I think also the Finance Committee viewed it the way they did as well. You know, this isn't just us, you know, this is a discussion about multiple committees and boards in town.
But, you know, we have the money, we can split it up any way you guys want to, and we can leave it this way. I know it was a, it was a reduction from what you guys asked for, you asked for 20, we cut it in half because we're doing a lot of, we were doing a lot of budget cutting, but at this point, we definitely have the 10, it's not an issue if you, if you guys want to spend it. I just.
I guess, and it becomes, alright, Tom, I'll give you one more, and then I'm going to bring it back to the board after you, Tom.
I want to just footnote to Jim's, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. I want to footnote to Jim, when Provincetown and Plymouth, and the other major 400, and the statewide, all extended a year because of COVID-19, it would not be wise for Eastham to be left out of that, because we have our own voice and we can benefit from that. And this was happening sometimes without our knowledge, because Jim wasn't always invited to the state-level meetings. So, everybody else is extending the commemoration a year, and I think we really have to, to be part of that, to have the voice of Eastham, and the benefits to Eastham be extended. So, that's, I don't think it was anybody's fault to come to you and say, oh my God, we just heard, we need to extend. It sort of was surprising to us too. So, I'm not trying to make a big apology, I'm just saying that the writing is there that we need to continue, it seems.
Okay, I'd like to open discussion up to the board, to see if anyone from the board would like to comment. Jared?
I just want to say, it's not us making this decision here, and ultimately it was a town meeting to decide by the people what they want. But I guess my bigger question, and well, we sort of already got the answer before on this, is that I thought that a lot of this was supposed to be funded through all these commemoratives and souvenirs and everything. I don't really see any advertising, I don't see anything being pushed, I don't see any signs around town for that. I think that would be a great help in order to fund it, to go that way. I don't know, that's my two cents there.
Do you have any other input from the board? Amy?
Yeah, I just, I think the, you know, we obviously don't, aren't going to have the people this fall visiting that we would have had, had we not had this pandemic. So, I think there has been a shift in how this has been presented, and, you know, I think they've done a great job in shifting to these videos that they've been producing.
Amazing.
Yeah, that, it's really been incredible, I love watching them, and I, at first I was, I was thinking, how are they possibly going to find enough topics dealing with the 400? But when you think about it, you know, pretty much everything that's happened here is because of, you know, what happened 400 years ago, and so, you can really go out on a limb, and it may seem intangible at first, but they are connected, you know, to the pilgrims coming here and settling here. So, you know, it is a big part of our history, and I think, you know, the difference, $5,000 to $10,000 for monuments that will be around probably until the next 100-year commemoration.
We do it every 50, remember?
Oh, 50, okay.
I don't know why.
Probably won't be around for the next one, some of our younger board members maybe, but I think that's the first time I probably said that at a board meeting. But, you know, you know, I, at this point, I can't see, I mean, I think they did present, you know, a pretty solid budget as to how they've been spending their money and what they plan on spending it on, and, you know, we definitely have, you know, veto power on things they come up with as far as spending the money, you know, at, you know, before it's implemented. So, you know, I'm fine with actually keeping it for the 10,000 for now. You know, if Tea Time needs more money, maybe we up that instead of cutting it from the 400 at this point.
Well, I think Paul has applied for a grant that we're waiting to hear about, which would supplement the money that we have, so we're waiting to hear about that. And, you know, town meeting literally is going to be five months away after we get through this one.
Yeah, right, and so, you know, at this point, I would probably, even though I seconded the motion, probably vote no to change it, and vote to restore that 5,000 and make it 20,000 for the Tea Time and 10 for the 400 at this point.
Maybe I think I'm gonna, I think with the thought process, with the spin come and knowing what the town needs to be paving the path for, I think I'm gonna have to be voting in favor of shifting the money, but we're gonna, we have to call the vote anyway.
Can't hear you.
Oh, I was saying that I.
You're not coming through hardly at all, Jamie.
Can't hear you.
I mean, you're on. What happened? Can you hear Jackie? Checking. Are we? Are we a little better now? Can you still hear that? Can you hear me? I don't know what that noise was.
I think that was Al's child.
You're on. No. Make sure this. Can't hear anything.
Yeah, I can, I can hear Al, I can hear Art, I can hear Jared, but I can't hear Jamie and Jackie at all. Still nothing at all from Amy and Jackie. Oh, they're gone.
Okay, here we go. Can you hear us now?
Alright.
Jared, can you hear us?
I can hear you a little bit.
Amy?
Yeah, I can hear Jared and Al just fine.
Are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, I can hear Art too.
Okay.
We just lost, the girls at Town Hall are mute, or at the library, actually.
Are you better? Hello?
I think they left the meeting and they'll come back, maybe. Although, who's hosting this? Oh wait, there they come.
Hold on.
No.
Don't hang up, we're coming back.
We just see the logo now with Jamie and Jackie, but still no audio.
I've been having trouble with my connection the whole time as well.
Yeah, I cut out once, but generally, I see them again, but still can't hear you. See, Jackie, I see your lips moving and nothing's coming out.
They can hear us.
Yeah, they can hear us, I think, just fine, so.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Yep, alright. Do you want me to make, I was the last one to talk, I think, on this?
Call the vote.
Motion, do you want me to, or to, okay. So, I guess the motion is for the 25,000 for Tea Time and then 5,000 for the 400 Committee. So, there was a motion in the second, so I guess we'll go through and we'll try and vote here. Art?
No.
Myself, no. Jared?
No.
Al?
No.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, 1 to 4, it fails. So, I guess I'll go ahead and make a new motion to approve Article 11 with the 20,000 for Tea Time and 10,000 for the 400 Committee. Okay. Alright, any more discussion? Alright, all in favor, Art?
Hi.
Myself, I. Jared?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And Jamie? No. Alright, 4 to 1, that passed. Alright, so, until we can hear them, Jamie, do you want me to keep going? Okay. Alright, Article 12, the Town Charter Amendments, I'll move that article.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, not seeing anyone raise their hands. Art?
Hi.
Myself, I. Jared?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
5 to 0, the Town Charter Amendment's passed. Hold on. Revolving accounts, now, this is probably where Jackie wanted to start combining, so which ones, we got?
17 through 17, our annual housekeeping articles.
So I guess I'll go ahead and make a new motion to approve Article 11 with the 20,000 for tea time and 10,000 for the 400 committee.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Art?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And Jamie? No. All right, four to one, that passed. All right, so until we can hear them, Jamie, do you want me to keep going? Okay. All right, Article 12, the Town Charter Amendments. I'll move that article.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, not seeing anyone raise their hands. Art?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Jamie? I. Five to zero, the Town Charter Amendment's pass. Hold on. Revolving accounts. Now, this is probably where Jackie wanted to start combining. So which ones? We got?
13 through 17, our annual housekeeping articles.
18, 16. Okay, yeah. Thanks, Rich. So we have 14 through 17. I'll move Articles 14 and 17 to recommend.
13 through 17.
Oh, sorry, 13 through 17 to recommend?
No.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Al's second. There's a baby crying in the background.
Yes, I think we're back.
Oh, I hear Wayne. All right, all right, Jamie, I'll turn it back to you. We have a motion and a second for Articles 13 through 17.
All right, we're gonna do a roll call. Art?
Aye.
Can they hear me? Jared?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
All right, so that was 13 through 17?
I'm getting feedback from you guys up there.
Article 18. Okay, Article 18, plastic ban.
I'll move that.
Okay, second. Roll call, Art?
Let's, can we talk about this?
Yeah. Did you have something you wanted to, to bring up on 18?
What I'm trying to do is, there's two plastic ban articles, right?
Yes. Yeah, so.
18 and 19, right?
Right. So one of these was, was a petitioned article, is that correct, Jackie?
Yeah, and this is.
And this is our article. 18 is the select board article.
I'm okay with it. I, I on 18.
Jerry?
Aye.
Jamie?
Al?
Al? Aye. Okay. Article, Article 19 is the petition.
Article 19.
Okay. Second. Call, is there a discussion?
Okay, so there was quite a bit of discussion of this at the, at the Finance Committee. They voted 0-9 against it. The discussion was the concern that if Eastham implemented this, people would just go to other towns to buy their bottles. Okay? And I think, understand, right now, we have a prohibit, prohibit, prohibition of the town buying plastic bottles. Is that correct?
Yes. There, there's no single-use plastic bottle use on any town sanctioned event or town property.
Okay. And this would just say that no retail store in Eastham could sell plastic bottles.
Yes, the thought, when we had voted on this last time, and correct me if I'm wrong, was this was not going to be enforced until September 2021, which gave us another town meeting, because this petition article is on all surrounding towns warrants. So if it does not pass in surrounding towns, we can put a new article on our warrant for 2021 that would extend it or overturn it or, but we want to be in line with all the other towns. So that's why we are keeping, you know, why we are hoping if this passes in Eastham, Orleans, Welfleet, then it would move forward, because then we would be in line with the standard.
Okay, but so there's a possibility this could pass at our town meeting.
Yes, but if it passes, it says enforcement doesn't begin until September 1st, 2021. So we would still have a town meeting before then to address the issue if it passes in Eastham, but not in the surrounding towns. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it did already pass in Orleans.
It did, yeah. Which I think was the big one.
Jackie can't hear you.
I can hear Wayne just fine.
Oh, you can hear Wayne?
You can hear.
Not Jackie.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Speak up, Jackie.
No, it sounds like Jackie's underwater.
Is that working?
The Finance Committee asked me to call Mahatmi and ask her if she would incorporate into her motion at this town meeting, something that says this would be postponed if it passes Eastham and it doesn't pass a certain number of towns around us.
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
And I, I would like to see Eastham in line with its neighbors on something like this, you know? I think a collaborative approach to a change like this is important. And for us to step out of line and to make it more difficult for the towns around us, you know, it would be doing a disservice to the, to the movement. So, is there any other discussion? Okay, and then, we have a motion, so I'm gonna call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Aye. Article 20, transfer of District H land for permanent conservation restriction. Can I get a, so I'm making a motion for that, second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there discussion? Okay, I'm gonna call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Aye. So I'm gonna group the next articles unless anyone opposes that. Okay. Newer amended tax deferral programs and exemptions, which are Article 21, 22, and 23. I'll move.
Second.
Is that good with you?
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? All right, call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. Then I'm going to group the zonings. So amendments to zoning bylaws, Articles 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Unless, I'm gonna move those. Second. Discussion? Okay, call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Article 30. 30A through H, these are going to be grouped as well. These are the Community Preservation Act funding articles. I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. Then group these, also the general bylaw amendments, Articles 31 and 32. I move.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Article 33. Petition, Article, accept a portion of toll and drive as a public way. I'll move that article.
Second.
Any discussion? And call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. Move Article 34, which is also a petition, climate policy article.
Second.
I'm going to open discussion to the board first. Is there any discussion on this? Art?
Yeah, the Finance Committee, I was at their meeting, and basically turned it down. They said it's a great idea, but it shouldn't be a bylaw. Is that about right, Jackie?
That's about right.
So they, they, the concept is fantastic. They really like the concept, but they say, you know, as a bylaw, there's no, there's no teeth in it, and it would be better as a resolution. So that's just the Finance Committee input.
Is there anyone else from the board? Okay, I'm gonna open this discussion up to public as well.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Gail.
Yeah.
I'm a member of the committee that brought forth the petition. And it's the same petition that you voted affirmative last time. So we, I'm here just to ask for you to affirm it again. And if you have any questions, I'm glad to attempt to answer them.
So I guess my question maybe is, if someone has some input on this as a bylaw, what happens as a bylaw? It would just exist, and from there, maybe we could do something with it at another town meeting that would give it more teeth?
We could, or.
I can't hear you, Jackie. I'm sorry.
The other option, which is a lot easier, is if the committee, when they move the article, someone from your group has to stand and make the motion at town meeting because it, unless one of the board decides they want to. But we can write a motion for you that would basically say that it's a town resolution, a town agreement with that language and not a bylaw. So the legal act is the motion made at town meeting. So we can actually take your petitioned article and make a motion that would do what the Finance Committee wants and what the Board of Selectmen wants, and then I believe you'd get unanimous support from those two groups if we did that. So that would be something that, you know, we could do.
You could write that so we know what we're saying, you mean?
Yeah, basically, we would, we would craft the motion, which we do, we do for a lot of petitioned articles. People can ask the moderator, and the moderator and town council will draft the motion for you. And, but it will basically eliminate the bylaw part and just come up with some language that's acceptable to your group and acceptable to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, that will bind the town based on a commitment to do this without making it a bylaw that kind of screws it up a little bit, I think.
And just because, you know, I have to bring this back, remind me again the difference between why the bylaw, even though there's no money, why that's such a?
If you look at, if you look at a bylaw, like the preceding bylaw, we're changing the roads, the work on private roads, it has a beginning, it has an end, it has a process, it has a fine if you don't do it, it, so there's consequences. That's the format of all of our bylaws. So this would be an odd, it would sort of be a policy stuck and codified in as a bylaw.
Okay.
I have to be honest with you, I think if we sent it to the Attorney General's office, which is what we'd have to do to make it a bylaw, they would reject it because it's not in the right format.
And as a resolution, does it have any teeth?
It has the teeth of, that it was voted on at town meeting. If town meeting agrees to it, then we would make it our policy, which we have already done, right? So it's in the strategic plan, it's already in the selectmen's goals. I think you've, you've, the town's commitment, this is just getting town meetings' commitment.
Right.
Every bit as, a bylaw with no consequence if we don't follow it is not any better than a resolution that we all agree we're gonna follow.
Okay, so you guys voted down tonight, then what's my next step?
I don't believe they're gonna vote it down, Cheryl. I just think that we can, we can fix the, the, the problem with it, that the Finance Committee has had. You've lost the Finance Committee. We can get the Finance Committee back with a good motion.
No, I understand that. So what's the next step after tonight?
The next step after tonight is when we get into town meeting planning, we'll discuss the motion and we'll get you a couple of motions, then you can choose which one you might want.
Okay, so will you, can I be the contact person and I'll let my group know that?
Yes.
Because I know that, oh my God, I'm going blank on his name, senior moment, was gonna be in touch with our moderator, but I can email them tonight and say that what we've talked about, and that you'll be in touch with me, and we're looking.
We had the same discussion with the Finance Committee, and he was there, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's gonna be opposed. I think we really want the town meeting and the whole town to embrace this.
Yeah, I agree. I think Jackie's spot on, just at town meeting, you'll have the motion and we'll be able to adjust it as we present it. Okay, so I'm going, unless there's more discussion from the public or from the board, I'm gonna call this vote since we have a motion and a second. Art? Aye. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl, for being here.
Sure. Interesting meeting.
Article 35, petition, non-binding public advisory question. This is about Plymouth, I mean, it's Plymouth Pilgrim Nuclear Plant. So I'm going to move Article 35. Give me a second.
Second.
Yep. Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Article 36, accept published reports. Move Article 36. Can you get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. You made it. Okay. That is everything, unless there's any discussion on that process. I know we had a few hiccups. All right, so we're gonna move. We survived. All right, so we revoked the ballot question for the capital, so we don't need to do that again, right?
You do, you.
We do.
Yeah, I need a formal vote to place the new language of one and two on the, one and two, because we changed the language on.
Okay, do you want me to read this?
You don't have to read it.
Okay.
They all have it. You all have the.
The re-vote.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, I'm gonna call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And I. Okay, administrative matters.
What about the, sorry, what about the special town election warrant?
Finalize vote.
You just voted it. We need to vote.
Vote on the date, time, and location. Finalize and vote on date, time, and location of town meeting. Date, September 26th. Yeah, you said special election. I don't see that on here.
We already voted that. We already voted the election date, right? It's just town meeting? Yeah.
Oh, okay. It, sorry, it says that in the outline, it, it's different in the agenda itself, sorry.
Town of Eastham Special Town Election Warrant is.
Oh.
It is. And then it goes to the town meeting after that.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not on the agenda that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We still okay to vote for town meeting then?
Yeah, I can vote for town meeting.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve town meeting for Saturday, September 26th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m.
Is that okay? We're all gonna be up at the crack of dawn.
Okay.
Sitting up too.
Rain date, Sunday, September 27th, 2020, at 1:00 p.m., civilized.
Well, we're trying to see if people need to go to church services.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All right, call the vote. Jared?
Aye.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And I.
And Paul, that is GPSing the field, so we know exactly how many people we can fit with distance.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is it outside or inside?
It's outside, it's going to be at the football field at Nauset High School. And that's why we have the rain date.
Okay, great, I'm glad it's outside.
Thank you, it's nice to hear that. Alright, next then, we're gonna move to administrative matters. Action discussion, license for use of town property at one-twenty-five Bay Road. I'm gonna pass this over to you Jackie.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good, we're doing a new thing. So this is, there are some paper roads that the town owns that people have to cross over in order to put their beach stairs or revetments or, um, other amenities on the coast, the bay coastal properties, bayside coastal properties. And the board, I don't believe this board has done any of these, but we have given permission to cross over town property or do work over town property. And since it continues, it's not a one-time thing, it's usually beach stairs. In this case, they're actually helping to shore the coastal dune with vegetation and really some nice, sustainable practices as opposed to revetments. They've asked for a ten-year license, so in the past, the town has granted a ten-year license. They have to provide us with insurance, they pay us a fee for the ten-year license, and then it renews, at the end of ten years, you can renew it for periods of five years at a time. So this is just the Board of Selectmen's purview to do or not do, and we have never, we've put conditions on them before, we've never denied one before.
They would be paying you the same fee, the same initial license fee and renewal fee, that's the standard.
Yes.
So that's the scope. Amy, I think you, did you wanna...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the license for, what's the actual address again?
One-twenty-five Bay Road.
One-twenty-five Bay Road in Eastham.
A second? Any discussion? Call the vote, Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And I. Okay, next is the revised MOU for the proposed Nauset estuary dredging project. Amy, this was what we started to touch on earlier, do you wanna expand on that a little more?
The, uh, the MOU, I guess, was a little bit earlier in our packet, and I think it just had a few dates that were changed, is that correct Jackie? Just moved the, the timeline a little bit further. I expect that we'll have another MOU coming for when the next scope is delivered by Woods Hole, but that's still pending.
Yeah.
So yeah, these are really minor changes to the MOU, moving some dates just further along in this year because of, you know, the COVID pause.
Amy, Rich and I did discuss, um, the, there is, and I forget which one it is, it's one of the, one of the conditions is, number nine, get, tell, is in, it basically says that the town is not indebted in any way. You can change your mind at any point, there's nothing about this that's forever, it's simply, and it doesn't commit you to any funds of any kind.
Right.
Yeah, that was...
Yeah, and Jamie and I actually met with a couple members of the Orleans Board, just to sort of, you know, I, I think there was maybe a little misunderstanding on their part for, for a moment, that we would contribute at this point, but, you know, we sort of reminded them that the deal was, you know, they, they're the ones who are really driving this to go forward with permitting, and they really need to prove to us that there isn't any damage going to happen to the estuary with this project. And so they're, and they, they fully agree that they're, they're taking responsibility for all the costs up through permitting, and then after that, you know, depending on what's, you know, advised as far as permitting or dredging itself, you know, then, then we'll talk again as far as, you know, if, if there are costs that they wanna split with us, you know, going forward through construction of this, we'll talk again, but, you know, as we, we all know, town meeting is the big, you know, elephant in the room to get all this stuff passed. And so, you know, for now, they're gonna, they're gonna bear the costs, but when we get into the, the big money, uh, we'll, we'll see what happens, so.
And you'll start to get an indication of what exactly the money number may be this October.
Yeah. It's a moving target, pretty much. I mean, you know, we heard initially they had anywhere from, I think it was like from, you know, three to seven million, and it's bounced all around, and channels change in width and length and pumping, and, you know, it's just gonna get more expensive, I think, as we go along, but we'll, we'll see what Woods Hole comes up with this fall as far as projected costs. But at this point, you know, the, the deal is with Orleans that we're not gonna stand in their way as far as, you know, going forward with pursuing the permitting.
Hello.
But we'll...
Go in.
Al?
Al, you're not needed. Oh, Noble's joining.
Yeah, hi.
Sweet, sweet, but, so that's really all I have to, to say on that. So the MOU, Jackie, do we need a motion to revise the MOU?
Yes, please.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to revise the MOU, I guess, number, item number four, change mid-February to July and end of April to September. And then in section five, uh, end of April also to September of twenty-twenty.
No section? Alright, and call the vote, Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al? Oh, we muted him, so he might not...
Just one other thing on that, Jamie, too, the, um, you know, when you and I met with a couple board members from Orleans, you know, there may be alternatives to dredging. You may be able to, you know, come up with a way to subsidize these, these fishermen that, that are constrained. I, there's no doubt that they're, they're having more difficulty than they used to have getting out. But I think we could save a lot of money, maybe just subsidizing, you know, those who rely on this as their sole source of income. I think there are a lot of creative ways we could come up with, maybe to help them out, so, in lieu of spending millions of dollars.
I think it's in line with like what we were talking about with the tax exemption, using tools, having a lot of tools in the toolbox, and it's the same thing here. Alright, so we have the vote on the table, Al, um, I just need you to vote on the motion on the table, the MOU. I'm I. And we're going to go forward because it passes.
Yep.
Okay, next is, revoke the September, yeah, does, do we need to scope services to you then? Or was that included?
No, don't scope services because we're not...
Doing, yeah, so revoke the September one-twelfth budget, we need a vote to approve the one-twelfth budget.
Okay, I'll motion to approve the one-twelfth budget for September.
Just second.
Okay, discussion, call the vote, Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And I. Okay, next, we have a committee resignation, Lauren Barker will be stepping down from the planning board, vote. You'll be gaining her on other fronts.
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
She's gonna be working for the town, right?
That's correct.
What's her, what's her new title?
We hope that after town meeting, she will join us as the Planner Economic Development Specialist.
Okay, thank you.
It'll come in handy as we do tea time.
Yes.
And try to fund a research study on what businesses will put them in.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to accept her resignation.
Just second.
Okay, discussion, call the vote, Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And I. And we have two committee appointments, John Bumbi for the Historical Commission and Stephen Wasby for Planning Board. Do we want to do these separately?
Do we need separately, please?
Okay, so we're going to do John for the Bumbi for the Historical Commission, the search committee is going to appoint him. And...
Is that a motion or do you need a second?
I'll make a motion to approve John Bumbi to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
And I. Okay, and I'll make a motion on the next to appoint Stephen Wasby to the Planning Board. Um, the search committee has recommended the appointment of Mr. Wasby to the Planning Board to replace a position that will be vacated by Lauren Barker on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Give me a second. I just need a second, the motion's on the table. Can you hear me? Ah, they can't hear me.
Nobody wants a second?
Motion?
Oh my god, really?
Jared?
Second.
Alright, so let's open this up for discussion, please. Art?
Okay, so this, this, number one is that I, from what I understand, and I, I interviewed Steve, he wants a position as a full-time board member. Okay, right now, with the, before Lauren resigns, there's only one opening as an alternate. The way it normally works on the Planning Board is that you come on as an alternate, and then you move to full-time when an opening comes about. So the question is, um, and Steve wants to start participating this week. Okay, so the question becomes, if he's replacing Lauren Barker, she's not, she's not resigning till the thirty-first of August.
Can't participate until after the thirty-first, he would be taking, the motion specifically is to begin when her term expires. He can sit in on the meeting, but he cannot participate.
Okay, so then, the second question becomes, and I was an alternate on the Planning Board to start, and it's a difficult position because as an alternate, you're allowed to give your input on all cases, but you're not allowed to vote on residential site approvals if there's seven full-time members there, it's seven and two, seven full-time, two part-time. So because the majority, majority of cases that come before the Planning Board are residential site approvals, a lot of the times, you're not able to vote. So you can make all your inputs and tell people what you think, but you can't vote. So, you know, one of the, um, one of the celebrations on the Planning Board is when a full-time member leaves and you get to become full-time.
Yeah.
So if Steve Wasby becomes a full-time member with Lauren's resignation, we bypass the current alternate.
Who was just voted in, like, who was just voted in, Art? Who was just voted in as an alternate, and he just moved here.
Understand that.
That's who we'd be bypassing.
I understand that he's voted in as an alternate, and he's only been at a small number of meetings. But I guess what I'm saying is, that if what we're saying is that when Lauren leaves, Steve comes in as a full-time, not as an alternate, we've bypassed and changed what we normally do. So just so that you understand that.
Is that a problem for Dan?
Uh, Dan, Dan's comment was, that's up to the, up to the Select Board.
Okay.
I'm gonna see if...
Yeah, I mean, obviously Steve Wasby's got a lot more experience than the guy that's an alternate. So obviously, he's gonna be a stronger member of the board right now. But I'm just kinda looking at the way the alternate looks at it, that says, hey, you know, I thought I was next in line.
Okay.
Just so you understand that sensitivity.
Okay.
I'm gonna see if anyone else on the board. Okay, Amy?
Do we have a second, is there a second alternate?
No, we're, we're open, we have one alternate opening. So theoretically, if, if we approve Steve, he goes as an alternate, he could go as an alternate right now. He doesn't wanna, from what I understand, he does not wanna be an alternate, he wants to be full-time.
I'm gonna pipe up real quick, just because I feel like this ties a lot into some of the things we've been discussing since, for several years now, Al, especially since Al had been on the board too. One of the points he always made was to not appoint people to a position just because of the convenience of the opening, or it was to appoint the right person to the position. And this is a perfect opportunity where this board has an opportunity to appoint someone who has a wealth of knowledge with regard to zoning, planning, the inner workings of the town of Eastham, and is very capable. And I think it would be a lost opportunity if we didn't put Mr. Wasby on as a, as a full-time member.
Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but I would counter it that at a couple meetings ago, we talked about how do you get new people onto all these boards? How do you bring in new blood? And Steve Wasby is extremely capable, but he's not new blood.
He's also not on multiple boards at this time, is that correct?
He's on ZBA, he's, he's, what he's saying, he's resigned from ZBA, so that I could be on the Planning Board.
He's resigned from the ZBA.
He's resigned from ZBA.
Yeah, so he could be on the Planning Board.
Right, and part of the reason is, I think, from our perspective, is to, it's spread the experience around because we, we have a differing level of experience. We have you and Lauren both leaving the Planning Board, and both of you were very strong members of the Planning Board. So that's a loss to the board, and we have one opening and one brand-new member. So I think that was the thinking around this. It could be flawed, but that was the thinking.
Yeah, so I, I didn't realize he was resigning from ZBA, I mean, we haven't seen that.
He's resigning from the ZBA, I have his resignation, don't I Lauren?
No.
Okay. I'll get his resignation.
Well, that, for me, that makes a huge difference, because having someone on the ZBA and the Planning Board, I think is the...
He has no intention of being on the ZBA and the...
That's a game changer, I, yeah. I, uh, I would say I wholeheartedly support him, you know, given the fact that he's resigning from the ZBA, but, and, and it's not effective until next month anyway, so we probably even have one more meeting to accept his resignation from the ZBA.
I will definitely make sure that the appointment doesn't go through unless you have his resignation from the ZBA, because we definitely don't want two, two people on, two regular...
Thank you, okay, that, that clears things up for me.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, no.
Alright.
Well, I did the interview, I signed the form, I'm okay with him being on the board. Dan wants him, which is to me the most important thing. But there was a concern, and Dan and I both talked about it, and I've talked about it with Jackie. And Dan says he thinks he could manage it, but Steve is an extremely intelligent guy, very strong background, also very opinionated.
No doubt.
And lots of times, he can come across that it turns people off. And my biggest concern was that, you know, we're trying to have an administrative office at Town Hall that is welcoming and that people like to come to and don't feel intimidated. So as I told Dan, I was concerned about that, that he could, in fact, intimidate some of the applicants. So as I told Dan, I was concerned about that, that he could, in fact, intimidate some of the applicants. It's not that he's not qualified, because he is definitely qualified. Dan says he thinks he can, he can manage that. That was just one other concern, but Dan does want him.
Thank you, Art. Yeah. I think we all bring a lot of personality to the table at our meeting, so, you know.
Right up to me.
Yeah. Alright, so unless there's further discussion, I will, can I revise the motion to accept Mr. Wasby onto the planning board contingent upon receiving his resignation from the zoning board?
I don't see why not. To fill.
To fill the full, the full term.
August thirty-first.
August thirty-first. When Lauren Barker resigned. That was quite a motion.
She wanted to make it through the August meeting because they had all the zone, you know, all the town meeting articles, and she wanted to see that piece of work.
I'll, I'll second the revised motion.
There's no further discussion. I'm gonna call the vote. Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
Al is not present. I will say I. Passers? Minutes. Time to review and approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Alright, discussion, vote. Jared?
Third regular.
Amy's freezing.
Hi.
Jared?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
I. Okay, town administrators report.
I'm gonna keep this really brief, unlike my former remarks, okay? There's three things I want to tell you about the Eastham Part-Time Resident Association meeting, the second meeting of the summer, is virtual on the twenty-sixth, next Wednesday night, from six to eight. And I just want, probably, I'm gonna have a lot of staff go, but I'd love one select person to go as well. You're so good. Are you asking a question or are you volunteering?
I volunteer.
Okay. And then I just wanted to make you, make you.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Send me the information, too. I think I can attend.
Awesome. That would be great. They usually have a lot of concerns, Art, around roads, planning initiatives. They're very, very interested in what projects we're doing and what, what's upcoming.
This is just, this is a class subject that Art had brought up about a stop sign, so we'll have to follow up about it afterwards.
And I wanted to just tee you up that we're, we are having a special meeting of the select board on August thirty-first, Monday, and that will be a full project update. So it's gonna be a, a project update like we did a year ago with four or five department heads going over all of the town projects, the updates, and where we're at. We're also going to dovetail those projects in with the strategic plan for you, and hopefully that will set you up for your goal-setting session. And then I wanted to remind you that we're gonna do a pre-town meeting on the tenth of September, so definitely keep that date. I think we were saying six to eight on that one, too. And we may need a lot more discussion and some preparation around that one, and maybe who's going to do what, or who wants to do what.
Who reads what articles?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so those are the three biggies coming up that I wanted to let you know.
Were you saying something that Art, you just muted?
Jackie was at the tenth.
Yeah, the tenth, yeah. Yeah, it gives us a couple of weeks before town meeting to average, you know, to get it on Channel eighteen, put it on the website, get it out there. And we may want to do some highlighted things with special articles, too. Okay, we'll talk about the pre-town meeting, yeah.
Let's do the first September. Yep.
Okay.
Any other business? Anyone on the board? Okay, Art? Alright, in that case, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a lot of seconds.
I was first.
Alright, call the vote. Jared?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Art?
Hi.
I. I'm sure Al would be an I.
I was an I an hour ago.
Yeah, thank you so much.